We'll now be recorded.
In the last session, what we were talking, we were talking about system landscape in SAP wherein we talked about three systems, right? Development, quality and then production. Everybody got a basic idea now, development, quality, production. Plus, we also talked about organization structure. In the organization structure, we talked about three points. Operating concern, second one is what?
Controlling area.
Controlling area, third one?
Company code.
Company code, right? Operating concern is on the top. Below the operating concern, controlling area. Below the controlling area, you will be having the company code. And we understood, company code is nothing but a legal entity. Legal registered business name will be treated as a company code. And we also discussed, on what basis you will be creating a company code, right? Whether it should be one company code or multiple company code. Depending on the number of registrations that you have. Legal names, each unique legal registered name is a company code.
Yes, sir.
Right, each registered legal name is a company code. Now, what we will do, we'll try to understand something called us. Those who are having background and all this, please make sure you will go on strictly. While you are not talking, strictly beyond me. Now, we'll try to understand something like business transactions in a company. When we talk about business transactions in a company, first we'll try to understand in a company, what kind of business transactions meaning? In any organization, in any company, on a daily basis, there will be so many transactions happening?
Purchases, sales.
Now, for every business transaction, we need to record an accounting entry, yes or no?
Yes, sir.
For every business transaction, you need to record an accounting entry. If there is no accounting entry, then it is not part of accounting, am I correct?
Correct.
If there is no accounting entry, then we can say that it is not part of accounting. Now, to record accounting entry, we need accounts, correct or not?
Yes.
Accounting entry is created or accounting entry is written with the help of account only. Now, what is this account we need to understand? We have two types of accounts. All these are only to have the basic level of understanding only, understood right? All these are only for the purpose of a basic level of understanding. Two types of accounts, one is here balance sheet account. Second one is profit and loss account, clear?
Yes, sir.
One is balance sheet account and the other one is profit and loss account. Here, what we need is further, in the balance sheet, there are two segregation. What are those two segregation in the balance sheet?
Assets and liabilities.
You will have assets, you will have liabilities. Similarly, in the profit and loss account, there are again two segregations, what are they?
Incomes and expenses.
You will get expenses and you'll get income. Clear everyone? At least at the basic level, you need to make sure you are comfortable here. Once these are clear, next what will happen to us? Highlight the asset. Okay. Or I'll highlight this expense. Similarly, liabilities and then incomes. Now, for these four, did we put four different colors? For this four, we were able to put four colors to record journal entry. Now, you have to slowly make sure you are getting familiar to the different terminology. Earlier I listed accounting entry, now I'm writing journal entry. First I was talking about accounting entry, now I'm talking about journal entry. Are these two same or different?
Same.
Journal entry, accounting entry, both are same. To record a journal entry, we need to have debit and what?
Credit.
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 You need a debit and credit. First thing we listed, you need to have account to write a journal entry. Then we talked about P and L account, balance sheet account. Now we're talking about, to record a journal entry, you need a debit and credit. Right? Meaning, to write any accounting entry, you need account plus you need the debit credit. Next, what we will do? You'll have to understand something called a debit, something called credit. Now, there is no direct definition to debit. There is no direct definition to credit because debit is used for every account. Credit is also used for every account. Right? You will be using debit for every account, you will be using debit for every account. Or one account can be debit, the same account can also be a credit.
Yes.
No.
Yes. I can say cash account on the debit side, I can also say cash account on the credit side. Depending on the situation, right, depending on the scenario, you can debit, you can credit. Now, when you're talking about a debit, majority you need to understand it increases asset and expense, am I clear?
Yes, sir.
Similarly, credit, it increases asset opposite is what? Liability. Expense opposite income, is this clear or not clear?
Yes, sir, clear.
Clear, right, for everyone, debit and credit?
Yes, sir.
Next. Now, credit, what credit will do? It decreases asset and expense. Similarly, it decreases what? Liability.
Liability.
Who feels liable?
Income.
Look at this thoroughly and let me know if these are correct. Look at this carefully and then confirm whether these are correct or not correct. As I said, don't blindly read whatever I'm writing, don't come to conclusion.
I think it's a liability. It is liable and income.
It is the right statement because when we considering the debit, it is some account. And someone is credit and some there is, so that is a statement is correct.
So, should there be any change in this or this is correct only, whatever we listed? See, if you're talking about debit, I'm talking about but debit I'm talking about asset, asset only, yeah. But if asset is debit. I have to.
Decrease asset income will increase.
Is this right?
Decrease asset and income will increase.
Is this correct now?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Now, debit is increasing asset and increasing expense. Plus, debit is decreasing liability, decreasing income. Similarly, credit is increasing liability and increasing income. At the same time, credit is decreasing the asset, decreasing the expense. Is this a statement right or wrong?
No, it's right.
Correct, sir.
Now, as I said, you should not blindly read whatever I'm writing because I will be purposefully writing wrong statements. I will be purposefully making the wrong statements just to make sure whether you're listening to me blindly or you're paying attention on what we're discussing. Understood, right? Because these are all basics, right? These are all basics which we are all familiar with. I want you also to equally understand what is happening with what we're discussing. Is this is something that you are feeling comfortable of? Now, after this, you need to understand something called us accounting cycle. So far, we talked about what SAP FICO cycle or SAP FICO data flow. Now, if you look at accounting cycle, let's see what will happen in accounting cycle. Even here, you will have first one, something like business transaction. Based on the business transaction, what do we write?
Final entry.
You will be writing journal entry or accounting entry. Based on the journal entry, what do you do?
Ledger accounts.
We will be doing ledger accounts, okay? After ledger account, what we will do?
Trial balance.
We will be generating a trial balance. After trial balance, what we will do?
Final accounts.
And then.
And then we'll see and balance.
Profit and loss statement, after this?
Balance sheet.
Balance sheet. First point, it is important for all of us to understand this. Clear?
Sir, I think your mic is far, sir, we, it's echo.
Now, actually, I'm in a different room today because of that you find this echo.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you clear debit and credit somewhat I have confusion, can I give you the example?
We will write it, that's why we're writing all these points. We will connect every point with a clear examples in the coming sessions, okay? This is only the basic. What we're trying to understand here is only to ensure you know what is what.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we are just trying to get familiarity on this screens, sorry, on this terminology because there are many who are not even from the accounting and finance background, right? For most of them, this may be the first time.
Yeah, yeah.
So, let them, yeah, feel comfortable with this terminology, then we will play with this. Okay, these are basically the accounting cycle, business transaction, journal entry, ledger account, trial balance, P and L and then balance sheet. Now, in every company, there is something called month end rate or every company must know their financial result, in short, profit slash loss on a monthly basis. Is this right? If you are running a company, do you want to know whether you are making profit loss on a monthly basis or not?
Shut up.
Right, you need this information on a monthly basis to decide whether you are making profit or you are making loss. Now, to decide whether you are making profit or you are making loss, what you need to prepare?
P and L account.
You'll have to prepare financial statements. First, you'll have to do the accounting. Once you do the accounting, you need to make sure from your accounting, you will be specifically looking at financial statement. Right?
Yes.
Financial statements are required. When you're referring to financial statement, majority we talked about three reports. From a financial reporting point of view or from a financial statement point of view, you are referring to three things, what were those three things?
Trial balance.
Right, trial balance, next.
And then left P and L.
Your telephone is wrong.
Profit and loss statement and then balance sheet, agree? These three are required on a monthly basis to know the financial result.
Oh.
Right. Next. First, when you talk about your trial balance, before you come to trial balance, there are dependent things or not? Trial balance is possible only when you complete ledger account.
Yes, sir.
Ledger account is possible only when you write a journal entry?
Yes.
Journal entry is possible only when you have the transaction?
Yes.
Meaning, just like that, nobody will write debit, credit, accounting interest, correct or not?
Yes.
I'll not simply debit, I'll not simply credit, whatever comes in my mind, right? Because it's a business and everything is related to business transaction. You need to understand business transaction. According to these business transaction, you need to write debit and credit. Meaning, you should know, if you do a transaction related to, let's say today is what, 31st October? On 31st October, every company will do what? Every company will pay salaries to the staff, employees?
Yes.
Right, on 31st October, every company will pay salary to the employee. Now, if your company is also making a salary to employee on 31st of October, which means today, you must record salary's entry today or not? Correct or not?
Yes.
What entry will you report for salaries? What will be the accounting entry for salary?
Salaries to.
Salary account to bank.
Salary account to debit, bank account to credit. Now, why you're debiting salary account? Because the salary is an expense, right?
Salary is expense, yeah.
Because the salary is expense, you're debiting salary account. Why you're crediting bank account? Because your money is going out, right?
Money is going.
You're crediting bank account because money is going out. Here, when you write any, right? When you write any accounting entry or any journal entry, in every journal entry, you're talking about debit and credit. Now, debit has got a different logic, credit has got a different logic, am I right?
Yes.
Right, debit and credit is not the same every time. Now, whether to debit, whether to credit is to be decided based on what?
According to accounting rules.
Nature of account, nature of account.
Right, meaning here you need to understand to write. All we are discussing now is only to get a basic understanding, basic idea, okay? Nothing beyond that. To write journal entries, we need accounts and debit, credit, yes or no? Press the accounting entry, we need this, now to know whether to debit an account or to credit an account. Again, we must know accounting rules, right? Or like a lottery system or every time you do a toss, head means debit, tail means credit, like that you will do or you need to know the logic behind everything?
Logic, correct.
Logic.
Right, you should know the logic behind everything, most of the things we are already aware. The only point is, we don't know the logic, but technically you're always correct majority, right? Because when you tell the accounting interest, most of you told that for salaries, salary accounted debit, bank account credit?
Yes, sir.
Because directly accounting entry will come to our mind. The only point is, you may not be aware why debit, why credit? Otherwise, entry we are familiar or not?
Yes.
Entries we are familiar, but the logic we may not be familiar, that is what we need to fix, that is what we need to figure out. Now, to do it, what we'll have to do is, one point. First, let us write down something called us golden rules of accounting. When you talk about golden rules of accounting, how many rules are available?
Three.
Three.
There are three rules.
Personal real, personal real normal.
I'll put rule name. Then I'll put debit. Then I'll put credit. This is what, rule name. This is a debit. And we'll put, this is a credit. This is credit. Okay. Now, we were referring to how many rules?
Three.
Three rules, first one is what?
Real account.
Personal.
Personal.
Personal account, second one?
Real.
Real account.
Real account.
Real account, third one?
Nominal.
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 Nominal accounts. In short, personal account, real account, nominal account, clear everyone, only the name.
Yes, sir.
Now, personal account will tell you when to debit, what to debit. Personal account will also tell you when to credit, what to credit. Similarly, real account also tells you what to debit, when to debit. Real account also tells you what to credit, when to credit. Nominal account also will tell you when to debit, what to debit. Nominal account also tells you what to credit, when to credit, yes or no?
Yes.
Now, every account is of the two categories only. One is P and L account, another one is balance sheet account. Within the P and L, you may be having income, expense. Within the balance sheet, you will be having asset and liability.
Yes.
Stick to these fundamental, asset, liability, income, expense, which will tell you what to, what is what. Now, according to personal account, what is, what is debit?
Debit the receiver.
Debit the receiver.
Debit the receiver, okay, credit?
Keeper.
贷the giver.
Credit the giver, is this right? This is the personal account rule. What about real account rule?
Debit what comes in.
Debit what comes in.
Debit what? What comes in, right, and credit?
What goes out.
What goes out, right? As per real account, debit what comes in, credit what goes out. What about nominal account?
debit.
debit, expenses, credit all comes again.
Debit all?
Expenses and losses.
And losses? Credit all?
Credit.
Incomes and.
Incomes and gains.
Incomes and gains, understood? This is again roles of accounting. These are the golden rules of accounting. Now, after looking at these points, you need to make sure we are comfortable or confident on these points. Once you feel you are comfortable, you are confident on this point, it will be easy for us to further elaborate, expand, understand the different, different practical business cases, assuming we are doing the business, we are operating the business and this is what the transaction we are initiating. For each of this transaction, what would be the accounting, we can easily understand, we can easily relate, how the accounting is supposed to happen. For this accounting to happen, what we need to know, why you're debiting, how you're debiting, each and every point, we need to clearly understand. Alright, now here, just to stick to these rules only. We will elaborate, we will understand with practical examples in the coming session. At this moment, what we want is, we feel that yes, I am familiar with this now. Next time, when I talk about rules of accounting or golden rules of accounting, will you be blank?
No.
No, right? Now, you got to know, okay, golden rules of accounting or accounting rule is nothing but three. Personal, real, nominal account, what is the logic for everything you understood? To write a journal entry, you understood, I need account, I need debit, credit. Account you understood, it may be P and L, it may be balance sheet. Within P and L, you understood, it may be income and expense. Within balance sheet, you understood, it may be asset or liability. Right, meaning slowly you're able to feel comfortable or not, familiar or not with the terminology, those who are new. Those who are already familiar with it, you are able to refresh, recollect, correct or not?
Yes, sir.
Kind of a refresher, kind of a revision, recollection, just to ensure, yes, I am now feeling comfortable and feeling confident about it. Now, next one. Ideally or default account balances in each category of account. This is again another point that you'll have to understand. What we're referring to here is, we were talking about four types of accounts. When I'm talking about four types of account, what are those four types of accounts?
Income, expenses, asset, liability.
Correct. Asset, liability, income, expense, correct or not?
Yes, sir.
These are the four types of account that you have. Ideally, asset should show what balance?
Debit balance. Debit balance.
It should show debit balance, liability?
Credit.
Credit balance.
Income?
Credit asset.
Credit balance.
Income should show credit balance, expense?
debit balance.
debit balance.
Is this clear for everyone?
Yes.
These are fixed, you can blindly by heart it. Maga by heart, whatever you do, but these are fixed everywhere. Not that I can change, not that you can change. Nobody in this world can change it, understood, right? Now, debit balance is also called as positive balance, what is this called as?
Positive balance.
Positive balance, credit is also called as negative balance, am I clear?
Yes.
Is this table clear for now? Is this clear for everyone now?
Income is positive balance, so negative balance.
Income is negative. Okay. Income is a negative balance. If you look at it, credit or incomes, right? Debit all expenses? Okay, we will understand, I'll connect every point with simple, simple accounting examples in the coming sessions. Now, let us only focus on the headings or one-liners. Then we will elaborate with practical example, I'll connect each and every point that I'm writing on the Excel sheet with valid example. Okay? Next one. Next one. How to write numbers? In accounting format? We all write numbers. All of us write the numbers, right?
Yes.
Right? I'll put number. Regular format. Then I'll put. Accounting format. If I highlight these three again, number. Let's say, regular format. And then, accounting format. If I say something like hundred, two hundred, three hundred. Minus hundred, minus two hundred, minus three hundred, correct or not? Meaning you will tell only two types of number, right? Positive number, negative number, right or wrong?
Yes.
Correct.
You will get only two types of number, positive, negative number. Now in the regular format, how do you write? You write exactly the same way. This is the regular format. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
This is the regular format. Now when you say this is the regular format, then what about accounting format? Accounting format is always this, can you see on Excel sheet, comma style?
Yes, sir, comma.
If you put this, now this is the accounting format. Now accounting formers, format always comes with decimal. And then negative amount is in bracket. There is a difference between regular format, accounting format or both are same.
Different.
Difference.
There is a difference, right? Meaning as a FICO consultant, as a finance candidate, as an accounting candidate, make sure you write the number or you read the number in a different way. Am I clear? Meaning from the base level, you need to ensure the way you look at the system, the way you look at the number and all should be improved, should be exactly the way you are supposed to do look at in a project. Am I clear?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Now this is how you have to look at the accounting format or accounting number. Next one. Something like. Now let me write something called as assignment. If we talk about some assignment, what I want you to do is in the assignment. List out below. Fifty assets. Fifty liabilities. Fifty incomes. Fifty expenses, total how many?
Two hundred.
Two hundred.
Two hundred, there should be no duplicate, understood right? Just to give you an example, if I say asset, I may say cash, bank, land. Furniture, something like that. Similarly, liabilities, I can say capital.
No.
Loans.
Overdraft.
Tax payable, overdraft, whatever, just an example. Income you take, sales.
Rent. Commission.
Commission received and so on. Okay? Expense may be. Salaries, wages. Purchases, rent and so on. Like this, how many you need to write?
Fifty. Two hundred.
Fifty in each category, overall two hundred we have to write. This is very, very important. Nothing to be taken light from here, you have to take this very, very seriously. Okay? Otherwise what will happen when you write the accounting entries or when you do the practice? You do not know what to do here. Because as a consultant, we need to post the entries to do the testing, to practice, correct or not? For our practice, you need to post different accounting entries. And here, what will happen if you are clear about different, different account names? Easy for you to write different accounting entries, understand in a different way. Otherwise, you will end up telling the same account name every time. Got your point, got my point? Which should not be the case. I want you to know different kind of expenses, different kind of incomes, different kind of asset, different kind of liability. All I want you to do is write fifty in each. How you write it something, this is not any exam where I want you to put your brain, apply. I don't want it, I don't care how you write it. Even if you copy paste from Google, I am fine with it. But all I want is you to take out some time and then put some effort and then write down. But before you go to Google, write down whatever is there in your mind. Wherein you will realize how many account names I am able to write at this moment, agree? Maybe you are able to write only ten assets. After ten asset, you are blank, possible or not?
Yes, sir.
Maybe after seven or eight liabilities, you are blank. After six, seven incomes, you are blank. After ten, twenty expenses, you are blank. But remember in any project, you will be having more than thousand accounts, how many?
Thousand.
More than thousand accounts will be there in any company. Now. You need to ensure that these accounts you are familiar with. We are a consultant, all you need to know is, if you are looking at a business transaction, if you are talking to a client, if you are in any meeting discussion, make sure the way you listen to an account name, you can relate what it does. First thing, you know that if I say that I am paying rent, now rent is asset or liability?
Rent is expense.
Expense and expenses.
Rent is expense, not asset, not liability. Let's say if I am receiving the cash, cash is expense or income?
Asset.
Asset.
Income.
Cash is, cash is.
Cash is asset, correct.
Cash is asset. Now you need to make sure, based on the transaction, you have to relate, you need to understand whether it is asset, liability or income expense. You getting my point right? Now knowing the account name alone is not enough, you need to know this account is related to asset or liability, income or expense. Plus you said here, what you say? P and L account or balance sheet account? Got my point right? Which will tell you a little more clarity or which will give you a little more comfortable on this screen. Else what will happen? You know the name, but you do not know where it falls center. That's where we end up getting confused. When somebody is talking about, no, I'm, I'm not good at accounting, I'm not from accounting background, right? This should not come. When you are getting into SAP FICO, never tell I don't know accounting, I am not from accounting background, I am not good at accounting, I am from BTEC, I am from X, Y, Z, don't tell this. The moment you decided that you want to get into SAP FICO, you need to know all these things. It is immaterial whether you are from accounting background, not from accounting background, you are working in accounting and finance, you are not working in accounting and finance, it is immaterial. You are learning SAP FICO. For learning SAP FICO, whatever accounting you require, irrespective of the background that you are coming from, you all have to start from the same dot, same starting point, understood right?
Yes, sir.
It may be a learning, it may be a revision, it may be a refresher, simple. Which will give you confidence, which will give you more clarity on every business process understanding as we move forward. Clear right? That is very, very important for us. Being in a position to understand what you are doing, why you are doing, because tomorrow when you are in a project, you will talk to the client, right? You will be in a meeting. Or client will tell you business process, business requirement. When they talk about business process, when they talk about business requirement, they will only explain. When they explain, they will be using different accounting terminology, different accounting words and all. Make sure you feel comfortable with it. Don't think that I am not understanding, everything is going out of my head. Unfortunately, this is not an exam. This is not a syllabus where you feel that I will leave it in optional, I will leave this for choice. I prepared the other topic, this I will leave it for option, I can still pass, nothing to it. No option here, no choice here, you need to know everything. You got my point?
Yes, sir.
First, you are a consultant here, not a user. If you are a user, you can say that I am working in accounts payable department, all I need to know is AP enough. I am working in accounts receivable department, all I need to know is accounts receivable, it is enough. But it is not like that. You are a consultant. You should know everything, at least familiarity is required. Okay? At least when you have this familiarity, it will give you more clarity on the subject. Understood right? Which will.
Yes, sir.
Or which might create a little, a tricky now, maybe something is not getting into your mind. But trust me, as you move forward, you will start enjoying this. And you will see that this will simplify your total SAP FICO, no surprise, right? These fundamental basics, whatever we are discussing now, all these points will make your SAP FICO very simple. There is no complication, there is no tough difficulty, it's all very simple because you know the basic fundamentals clearly. Okay? Now without complicating further, without giving you overloaded to refer or review everything, let me stop this recording today. Now what I want all of you to do as an assignment is, I want you to list out fifty asset name, fifty liability name, fifty income name, fifty expense name. Anybody who did it, what you do is, you put everything in an Excel sheet, write down in an Excel sheet, something like this. Okay, you keep a new Excel sheet. Now can you easily put two hundred rows here or not? Can I put two hundred? I'll put A. I'll copy this A, I'll copy the sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nine. Or I'll put this here, eighteen. I'll do. This much are enough. This is now one eighty. Now one ninety eight, I can keep another test. Something like this, you feel like this only, meaning in a single sheet, you can write two hundred in, correct or not? Something like this. You take first fifty, okay? Or you take something like fifty in every, every sequence. Maybe first three rows, you highlight one color, meaning first is asset. For next fifty, you put another color, maybe this is liability. Then you simply take this photo, put it in the group, understood? After you doing it, you adjust your zoom in such a way that you can see all the names. Take a photograph, keep it in the group, am I clear? Not clear?
Cheers.
Yes, sir.
Right? Do what? Then this will give you a clarity, this will give you a confidence, yes, what I need to do. Accordingly, when we connect in the next session, it will give you more clarity, you feel more comfortable, right? Next time onward, when you start posting the entries and all, we will make sure we don't repeat the entries. Every time you post a entry, you have so many account names striking your mind. And for every account name, you should know why we use it, what will happen with us, understood? Let's say you take salary. Salary is something that you will pay ten times a month or twenty times a month or one time in a month.
One time.
One time.
One time in a month. So when you do the practice, don't post the salaries every time, understood? You got my point right? Assuming I am practicing SAP FICO, I am practicing a topic. Now here, when I posted the entry to a salary, I need to make sure I will post only one time to salary. Again, I don't post salary entry, it doesn't make any sense because in any project, in any company, salary is posted only one time, correct or not?
Correct.
And when you do a practice, don't post a salary multiple time. You post multiple time because you know only salary, rent, X, Y, Z as an expense. Now when you know fifty expenses, you change expense. Maybe I will put something like loading the charges. What do you mean by loading charges? You need to understand, right? Then you will start thinking about it or not? Similarly, I may be talking about something like. Fuel expenses. Why fuel expenses are coming? I may be talking about, let's say payroll expenses, I may be talking about. Some, some other expenses, miscellaneous expenses, bank charges and all. Then which will give you a clarity, okay? All these things are happening in a company, that is why we are all accounting as an expert. Which will give you a more clarity or not? Yes or no?
Sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Right? Now these things will help us feel comfortable on the subject and feel confident on the subject, which is very, very important for all of us right from the beginning. Understood what to do?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Alright? So let me stop this here.